(knocking)
Madam Clerk.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Sunshine Law Notice having been published according to law with a copy on file in the City Clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Here.
Councilmember Sims?
Here.
Councilmember Greenman?
Here.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands unbreakable under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have some presentations tonight. We have a busy schedule, busy night. First off, I'd like to bring up, we have a presentation, a proclamation for Nellie Parker School. So would Mrs. Whitaker please come up? I know I saw you here.[81.61][81.61](applause) The city has a proclamation for your school. A monument that falls a special place in my heart. Office of the Mayor of the City of Hackensack. Whereas the City of Hackensack desires to bestow upon Nellie K. Parker School this proclamation for its recognition as being a top-ten school by Jersey-K, the New Jersey Campaign for Achievement Now, and whereas Jersey-K showcases New Jersey's best schools in the following categories: low-income student performance, black student performance, Latino student performance, performance gains and overall student performance, and whereas the Nellie K. Parker School has been recognized as a top-ten school for elementary school black student performance by Jersey-K for its students' proficiency in reading and math at the highest tested grade level at the school, and whereas Nellie Parker School's high score in this category is a testament to the amazing achievements of its student body and educators, we would like to say that Nellie K. Parker School is one of those great schools making a difference for all Hackensack children every single day. Now therefore I, John P. LaBrus Jr., Mayor of the City of Hackensack, with other members of the City Council to hereby extend our sincerest thanks, deepest gratitude, and congratulations to Nellie K. Parker School and Lillian Whitaker Principal for its recognition as a top-ten school by Jersey-K. Everybody for Parker School, please stand. I have another proclamation which I'll read from today's. Is there anybody here from the human trafficking group that came before us last month? Is there anybody here? We do have a proclamation for them. I'm not going to read the whole thing. It's two pages. It's quite lengthy. But whereas human trafficking is a crime against individuals that violates the most basic human rights and deprives victims of every shred of personal freedom, and whereas human trafficking occurs when a person is recruited, harbored, obtained, or exported through force or coercion for the purpose of sexual or labor exploitation, involuntary servitude, and other types of mental and physical abuse, and whereas the United Nations International Labor Organization has estimated that labor or forced prostitution has estimated that more people are now harmed by human trafficking worldwide than have been at any other point in human history, approximately eighty percent of the victims are women and girls and fifty percent are younger than the age of eighteen. Whereas human trafficking is modern-day slavery, a practice that is in direct opposition to the fundamental principles of liberty and human rights upon which our nation was founded, and whereas on February 1st, 1865, President Lincoln signed the Thirteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution, once ratified, it officially outlawed slavery and involuntary servitude except as punishment for a crime. Whereas the City of Hackensack commands the work, demands the work of the New Jersey Coalition Against Human Trafficking for its statewide efforts to end human trafficking through education, advocacy, and commitment to end human trafficking, therefore I, John P. LaBrus Jr., Mayor of the City of Hackensack, to hereby preclaim the month of January of each year as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in the City of Hackensack to raise awareness about the signs and consequences of human trafficking, to promote reporting mechanisms and opposition to human trafficking in all of its forms. We hope to encourage support for the survivors of human trafficking throughout the state of New Jersey and across the world to put an end to this criminal activity and restore freedom and dignity to its survivors. Thank you. And now we have another special, it's a very special thing that's about to happen here. May I please have Lieutenant James Price Jr. please come up? And I would like to...[351.12][351.12](applause) Detective McGaughey, Police Commissioner Sims. We're about to swear in Officer Price as lieutenant. I just wanted to comment at this time that Officer Price is the first African-American lieutenant in the City of Hackensack in the city's history. He's the highest-ranking African-American officer ever, and we're very proud of him.[446.81][446.81](applause) Put your lieutenant in the Bible, please, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, James W. Price Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
The governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the office of.
Perform all the duties of the office of.
Police Lieutenant.
Police Lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I see a lot of friends and relatives of Jimmy's in the room, and what I want to start off by saying, well, I'm going to make a confession in front of everybody that Jimmy doesn't know, but before I say that, I want to talk about somebody else that was very special to the Hackensack Police Department. And he was a very dear friend of mine, too. Freddie Price. Freddie Price was a young man that worked for Felder Cattle, which doesn't exist anymore. And he used to live at 111 Central Avenue, and I'd see him on my way down Central Avenue sitting on the porch after work. We would shoot the breeze a little bit, and then he decided he wanted to be a police officer. So before, he would come, he came to me, told me, "I got my notice for the exam," and we brought him up into the narcotics division, and there was about three or four of us that would shoot him questions back and forth, and we kind of tutored him a little bit with an exam. And then he became a Hackensack police officer. Then I met another relative.[608.32][608.32](laughter) He was working for public service, and I was trying to break his chops, trying to say, "Look, you're..." I mean, if anybody remembers the way Freddie looked in uniform, I mean, I don't know. He needed the gun to keep the women away, but he was like a model in uniform, you know? And we were trying to convince this guy, and he's there, and I would drive around the corner seat with the Jack camera, August sweating, and I'd have the air conditioning on, waving at him. And finally, we convinced Jimmy that that was the path he should take. So one day, he made a big mistake, and he says, "You know, can I use you as a reference for the New Jersey State Police?" I said, "Sure." So he put me down as a reference, and I said, "But I really think you should be a Hackensack guy." And so, I hate to say this, but I had a lot of bad things to say about him when the State Police called.[667.91][667.91](laughter) And, you know, I'm confessing that to you today, Jimmy, but you want to know why? I don't think you'd be a lieutenant today. You're a lieutenant in the Hackensack Police Department. You've made the community proud, you've made the African community proud, you've made your family proud, and you should be proud of the accomplishments that you've made.[689.13][689.13](applause)
First, I want to say something to Ms. Whitaker. I am honored to celebrate your spirit of excellence and passion for learning, and your continuous effort are rewarded with the top-ten school honors. You and your staff make our city proud because of your dedication and hard work. On behalf of the citizens, the mayor, and council, thank you.[722.32][722.32](applause) Jimmy, sleepy.[729.04][729.04](laughter) I am also pleased to congratulate you on your history-making achievement. Your promotion as the first African-American lieutenant in Hackensack is to be commended and celebrated. Keep breaking boundaries and making history as you continue to rise through the ranks. Next step, captain.
Congratulations. It's a great honor.
I'll take it, and then I'll give him the call.
No, I think that's it. Thank you. At this time, we'll take a quick recess. At this time, we'll take a five-minute recess. Everybody's welcome to stay, but I know some of you probably just came for the presentations and the proclamation, so you're welcome to leave. Thank you for coming. All right. Thank you, everybody. Need to do the approval of some minutes, please.
Okay, we have approval of minutes for the January 6th, 2014 Cow Meeting, January 7th Regular Meeting, January 28th Cow and Regular Meeting.
Okay. May I have a motion to accept these minutes?
I'll offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Okay, may we now have the City Managers' report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. My biggest thing on everyone's mind for the past week and a half has been snow. We've had many, many challenges, and I want to thank some people in the audience that have called up to make suggestions. Some people have had the patience to work with us, but most of all, I'd like to thank truly the employees of the city, our DPW, our head of DPW, department head, sanitation there, department head, mayor, council. I mean, this was truly an effort where the city, the employees, everybody had to come together. We had snowfall after snowfall after snowfall. It was really nowhere to put the snow after a while. The county was kind enough to let us bring snow to Overpeck Park if we needed to, but we were able to work around that. We were running trucks 24/7 for days, brought in outside contractors as well. As everyone else in New Jersey, North Jersey, we ran low on salt. We actually have a pile of salt left about the size of the table over there, about four feet high by four feet wide right now. But luckily, after being on the phone all day, we have 150 tons of salt coming tomorrow, which should hopefully, with rain coming, freeze out night, should be good enough to get us through the next week. We've also run numbers just to compare what the snowfall's been like over the last few years and the budget and the dollar amounts, and just to give you a really rough estimate. Or actually, not very rough, our CFO put together a very nice spreadsheet. But if you go back to 2009, we spent $267,446 between pothole repairs, equipment, rock salt, vehicle repairs, equipment, outside services, unanticipated expenses and overtime. In 2014, and we're not done yet, this is as of February 19, 2014, but does not include the labor for the last week, so it's a little misleading, we're up to $233,829.78. Keep in mind, this does not include November and December of this coming year. So it's substantial. It's very substantial. Without the help of everyone getting this together, if you go to the surrounding towns, I think you'll see Hackensack did a superb job, and some towns you go to, it doesn't even look like they plowed. So I want to commend everyone and the people in the town as well for moving their cars. We coordinated with the traffic division to have them go up the streets to help with the police, I'm sorry, to help with the crews that we brought in from Kramer and our own crews to try to get the best we can from curb to curb. We also instituted parking without penalty, where we're going to use municipal lots from now on. You'll get, we've also acquired a reverse 911 system, so that when we do have an emergency, a phone call will go out, you will be notified that you will be able to park. It could be for any emergency, but specifically for snow, we will let you park in one of the municipal lots for free. You'll be directed which ones will be available. This last storm, we had Lot C, the Atlantic Street Garage, and the rec center. We have an emergency number two for pothole repairs. If everyone has a pen, it's 201-646-8058. If you call that number, right now, we could do call patch repairs to help defray some of them. I mean, some streets, it looks like bombs went off because they've been plowed so many times, but we'll do the best we can to help accommodate. Excuse me. On another note, I'd like to report that we've just sold another 11 cars that we had stored down at the DPW. We have about a dozen more to go, believe it or not. It's going to be, by the time it's all said and done, I think we've come up with about a total of 60 vehicles that we're able to sell. The good part about it, once they're sold, we no longer have to pay insurance on them, registration, anything else, because the ones, the cars that were staying there, we did have to maintain insurance on. Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Thank you. All right, let's go with Resolution 48-14, please.
Okay, that's the resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 4-2014, an ordinance amending attachment 1 to Chapter 107A entitled " enumeration of licenses, miscellaneous services and fees of Part II entitled General Legislation of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code." This ordinance has been pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Okay, at this time, if anybody would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come up to the microphone, give your name to the clerk, your name and address. Seeing none, I'd like a motion to close to the public.
Offered.
Second. Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 4-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay. Moving on, Resolution 49-14.
Is the final adoption of ordinance number 5-2014, an ordinance adopting 150-170 Main Street Redevelopment Plan, Governing Block 302, Lots 4, 5.01, 5.02, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 50-14.
We need to do...
I'm sorry.
You need to ask if anybody wants.
Oh, that was a final.
That was to open it.
I'm sorry. At this time, would anybody like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only? That's for 150-170 Main Street. Okay. Seeing none, I need a motion to close, please.
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey that ordinance number 5-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay. Moving on, Resolution 50-14.
This is an introduction of ordinance number 6-2014, an ordinance amending Chapter 117 entitled Parks of Part II entitled General Legislation of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code adds Section 117-8 entitled Smoking.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 6-2014, is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on March 4th, 2014 at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at a regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place will persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby authorized and directed, to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 51-14.
51-14 is the Main Street Business Alliance, Inc., 2014 budget for, in the amount of $360,595. This is the introduction.
Correct. May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. And Resolution 52-14, payment of bills.
Okay, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack that bills in the following accounts be and are hereby ordered paid. The current fund has $11,640,726.45. The trust account is, I'm sorry, the total expenditures are $13,221,846.39, and inter-funds and transfers are $120,061.4.
Okay, may I have a motion to accept the bills?
I'll offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
The following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. The consent agenda goes from Resolution Number 53-14 through Resolution 89-14.
Okay, may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Okay, at this time, I'd like a motion to open up the meeting to the public.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Okay, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to read a new format we're going to have for open session. I'm going to open the public comment portion of this meeting, but before I do, I want to set the ground rules by which this session and all future sessions of this mayor and council will be conducted. The public comment session of the meetings provided, or, I'm sorry, provide the public with the opportunity to make comment and ask reasonable questions of the governing body. This is arguably the most important part of our council meeting, and it should be treated as such. We take this portion of the meeting seriously, and we ask that you do the same. This is neither the time nor the place for inquisitions, grandstanding, or temper tantrums. The citizens of Hackensack deserve to have their meetings run with appropriate decorum, and we will not tolerate a lapse in that standard of civility. I realize everything we do will not be applauded by every member of our community. If you want to express your dissatisfaction with something this administration has done, I ask that you do this in a civil and constructive manner. The men and women on this day are so hard-working diligent public servants who are doing what they believe is the best interest of this community, and they should be treated with the same level of respect that you would afford your friends or neighbors. Name-calling, threats, baseless accusations, or assaults on one's character or ethnicity will not be tolerated. Anyone who attempts to disrupt this meeting or who engages in contact outside the boundaries of appropriate decorum will have their time at the podium terminated and be asked to leave the council chamber. There are some people here for the first time, and perhaps their only time, and their experience should be positive and productive. With that, I will now open the public comment session of the meeting. Anybody who would like to speak, please come to the podium. You have five minutes. It'll be kept by the clerk. Give the clerk your name and your address. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Evening.
Jason Nuttermacher, 235 Prospect Avenue. My first question would be to the city clerk if there's now a general policy that all Oprah requests must be reviewed by the city attorney.
Mayor, it's appropriate to ask questions directly to the mayor, and so if the mayor would like me to respond to that question, I'd be happy to do it.
Yes, that would be fine. Thank you.
Mayor, through you, there's not a policy within the city that all Oprah requests are to be reviewed by the city attorney. That's not the policy of the city.
Okay, thank you.
Is it just my requests?
Who are you asking, sir?
I guess the mayor, who I...
Could you be more specific, please?
Well, I made a request on January 17th, and I requested Mr. Scrieble's attorney bills. I've requested them in the past, and they were rarely given to me. And this time, I want, they want, Mr. Scrieble wants to charge me $450 to get what should be a public record of the attorney fee bills. Now, I was under the impression that this city council was going to have a more open dialogue and make government more accessible to taxpayers like myself, and I was wondering how does that fall in line with charging me almost $500 to get what's a public record?
Mayor, if you'd like, I could explain that.
Yes, you may.
In response to the resident's question, actually, prior to, I think, very recently, and prior to our enactment of an Oprah ordinance which governs all questions regarding Oprah and all Oprah requests in compliance with the law, I believe that the prior city clerk had, on occasion, provided legal bills without the attorney having reviewed them. Since that time, we've instituted a policy whereby anything that is containing potential attorney-client privileged information should be reviewed by the attorney to make sure that there are no inappropriate and other things that are going out that are still protected by the attorney-client privilege. There may be some argument that all attorney bills are not protected by the attorney-client privilege. That's not true. The case law is very clear that... The case law is very clear that in especially matters that are currently in litigation or things that still, where the attorney-client privilege still, um, resides, those matters would have to be looked at so that the interests of the city is protected, um, and that, um, matters of attorney-client privilege are not, um, are not disclosed, uh, outside, because once you destroy the attorney-client privilege, there's no way of, of, of getting it back. And so what we've done, um, is pursuant to the law, which allows us to quote, uh, an amount that would require attorney time, because we have gotten a number, uh, an inordinate amount of Oprah requests very recently, um, for bills and things of that. Um, what we're doing now is we've instituted a policy whereby anything that might touch the attorney-client privilege will be reviewed by the attorney in pursuant to Oprah law. You're allowed to quote an amount of time that's estimated to review that. In this instance, I believe that the, um, resident had requested about six months of bills. In reviewing those bills, by looking at the stack, we made an estimate that that would take about three hours of time at the city rate of one fifty, and so that's what we did, and we notified the resident. And that will be the policy of the city henceforth regardless of what may have happened, um, in the past.
So, you're on the new, you're, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Scribo. Were you finished?
Mayor, I was finished.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, it's interesting that six months of bills equate to three hours of time, three times one fifty. We come up with four fifty. My request is for two months. So why am I now being charged for four fifty if you're charging four fifty to review six months of bills?
Uh, Mayor, through you, my recollection was what it was. All I know is when we made the estimate, it was based on whatever the resident's request was. If it's two months, he says it's two months, then the three hours for, was for a review of two months of bills.
Now, the Oprah statute states immediate access order now should be granted to all bills. Now, as a practicing attorney for ten years, I can tell you, before bills go out, they're already reviewed for accuracy in any other kind of information, especially to a public entity such as the city of Hackensack. So, why are we not doing that before you send the bills out?
Mayor, do you want me to respond?
Yes, you may.
Uh, as a practicing attorney for twenty-five years, my, my practice has been is to, uh, send out the bills. They are accurate. They are accurate for the city. However, there may, very well may be, um, matters of attorney-client privilege contained in those bills. So those are two separate issues. The bills are accurate. The bills have been reviewed. The bills are sent out. They have not been reviewed for disclosure of the attorney-client privilege.
Thank you.
The bills have to be under the statute immediately accessible. So now, how does an open public record act correlate to charging citizens four, five hundred dollars for these requests?
Let me, let me answer, Mayor.
Now, I, I could, I could quote Judge Doin, who recently stated the town's broad policy regarding attorney review is in conflict with the act's direct.
All right, so your, your five minutes is up, sir.
And in immediate sense. That's not, that's not what's going on.
Do you want me to respond again? Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have, we have resolved that case. That case actually involved the prior city attorney, where the policy was, um, having the city attorney actually preside over all responses to Oprah requests, and the city, um, got hit for, um, a fee award against it in that case. We're trying to avoid that situation, and I, I think we're able to do that here.
Thank you.
I don't think so, not as my attorney.
Sorry. Next, please.
Richard Salkin, Hackensack, New Jersey. First of all, why do you think a consent agenda is legal under our form of government, council? It's not. Have you read that every resolution has to be read? Do you understand that? Have you looked at that portion of the statute? Will you look at that portion of the statute?
Sir, could you please address the question through me, and I'll.
Will you please ask the city attorney if he's aware that a consent agenda is not permitted under this form of government? Would you ask him that?
Sir?
Uh, Mayor, the, um, there's no question that there are items that are permitted by the consent agenda. This is an issue that the mayor and I have spoken with about in, in connection with this meeting, prior to this meeting, and, and certainly, we have, uh, discussed the matter with the clerk, and, um, we'll be addressing the issue with respect to the, what items are appropriate for consent agenda versus new business, um, and, and that'll, that'll be dealt with in the future on a, on a going-forward basis.
Thank you.
So you, so you will not comment on what the statute with respect to this form of government says? Is that your answer here, sir?
Mayor, I don't see any reason to respond any further to the resident's request.
That's fine.
Forward.
I shall. You've been practicing, the city attorney's been practicing twenty-five years. I've been practicing forty years. It is really not that difficult to be careful when you submit a bill to a public entity such that privileged communications, confidential matters are not disclosed. It's really not that difficult, and I would ask you, Mr. Mayor and council, to instruct the city attorney to do that when he's billing so that the citizens can see what is being spent. And I know you copied on a letter that I sent to Mr. Scribo. You ran on a platform with a, with a, believe it or not, a, a, a portion that I fully support, getting attorneys' bills under control. You think you've succeeded, Mr. Mayor?
I think we're doing pretty good, yes.
Okay, are you aware? Now, when Mr. Scribo's firm was authorized to enter into a contract, as I recall, the contract, the resolution, which I believe his firm prepared, said not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars without further resolution of the council, correct?
Correct.
Are you aware that as we speak, from July first to December thirty-first, the firm Mr. Scribo is associated with billed two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars? You're aware of that?
Not, I don't agree with those numbers, no, I am not.
You don't agree?
I'm not aware of your numbers being correct.
I, I, well, I have the bills, and I reviewed the bills, and I, and I know that you add in Bergen Risk. Everybody understands Bergen Risk is the insurance administrator, but the funds they distribute and pay out to attorneys and other experts, et cetera, are city funds, correct, Mr. Mayor?
Correct.
Okay. I would be happy to share my calculations with you. I didn't make up these numbers. They come straight from their bills. So, you didn't, now, if I'm correct, did you get a communication from your city attorney saying, you know what, you need to enact, approve a new resolution because we're, we've exceeded two hundred thousand dollars, or about to exceed? Did you get such a communication?
We did have discussion on that at, at meeting last night, yes, and we've taken appropriate action.
Is the resolution on your council meeting tonight, is that your appropriate action?
I don't believe those numbers, the way they were reflected, I mean, to me, there's a difference of the way they're presented as far as the, the insurance money and the exact city attorney bill.
Mayor, if I could jump in on this, because this is an issue that I think touches on a number of issues in the city. I think the, the, the issue with respect to not to exceed is something that had not been done previously in the city in, in, in memory. I don't, um, when we came in, um, we, we saw a system that involved no procurement, no fair and open process, no not-to-exceed numbers, and so what we tried to do is institute certain controls within the city.
Excuse me, is, is this coming off my time? I just want to be clear, it's not.
Yes, it is, absolutely.
Well, we'll talk about the time limit, though. Okay.
And so what we tried to do was institute certain controls, and those controls would be coordinated among the clerk, the CFO, and that, those issues with respect to not to, not to exceed are such that you won't pay bills in order, and that you haven't, you haven't had the opportunity to know how far they've gone. And so you've had an opportunity to set some controls in place, and it's not uncommon in municipalities. It was factually, frankly, it was somewhat surprising that in, in a, in a city of this size, none of those controls had been in place prior to our coming in. And so what we did, we tried to set those things up, and obviously, the resolutions with regard to not to exceed and to extend those amounts, it, which will be decided by the council, not me, um, will be on the agendas at the appropriate time such that the city has the appropriate funds, um, set aside to pay those funds. So that's, that's kind of how it, how it arose.
For your information, the resolution you have posted on this wall is, has Mayor Melphy's signature on it. That's a resolution from a council that left office on July first. You don't have a policy timewise. Okay, now, if I'm correct, in my calculations.
Your time is up, sir. Sorry, your time is up.
I, I, as I said to you, sir, I don't think you have a time limit. Mayor Melphy's name is on that, not yours. Half of my time was chewed up by a very verbose comment, your city attorney. I can finish up in thirty seconds if I'm extended that courtesy, Mr. Mayor.
Do we extend that courtesy, sir?
It's in the discretion of the mayor.
No, I'm not going to extend it, Mr. Salkin, only because we have a lot of people behind you.
Well, I can only say this as I'm walking away. Two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, at that rate, it'll be six hundred thousand dollars for the year, and you won't even be able to fund with the elimination.
All right, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Next, please.
Ron M. Buttafuoco, Fairmount Avenue. Jared Wexler, Byrne Street. Ms. Buttafuoco and I are both members of the Recreation Board, and we would, um, like to ask the mayor and council, um, a couple of questions about the way things have been handled with the Board of Recreation. First, it was always standing policy that board members' terms were, unless agreed upon or the members said they no longer wish to be extended, um, the person was either asked or just reappointed. Um, one of our members, a longtime member, received a letter in the mail thanking him for his service. We realize that's the council's prerogative, um, but, you know, it's, it's somebody who's given a lot of service to this city. He was, you know, Mr. McKenna was, uh, should have been afforded a little more courtesy than that. The other question I have for the council is, um, we have a very good recreation program in this city. The numbers have consistently increased. I take issue as a member of the Board of Recreation at a press release put out by this council last week claiming credit for saving the girls' basketball program and finding them gyms, when the issue at hand was the reason they could not find gyms was that a program run by a member of this council was taking up those gyms. Okay? It has been past practice, going all the way back to Tommy Delatorre and Fred Serbo, that when a council member was involved in a program which was involved in any way with recreation, that those council members stepped away and recused themselves from the operations of those recreation programs, and that's not happening. And I'm going to stop short of making, you know, saying anything further in accordance with what you said at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Mayor, in being respectful, but I, I, as a member of the Rec Board and a citizen, I, I believe that is something that does need to be looked into further on, on where that line is.
That's it? All right, thank you very much for your comments. Thank you. We will look into it. Next, please.
All right. Good evening. Frank Rodriguez, three hundred Clinton Place.
Good evening, sir.
I just want to join in congratulating Nellie K. Parker and Ms. Whitaker and the Nellie K. staff for making out what is such a great school. I have to tell you, my daughter is a kindergarten student at Nellie K. Parker and Ms. DeLeah's class, and after being there for a grand total of three days, she turned to her mom and said, mommy, I love school. So you couldn't ask for anything better. And I think we should also thank and appreciate the Board of Education for giving schools like Nellie K. the kind of support. So thank you to Mr. Nudermacher, and Mr. Avellino, who are here tonight, and Mr. Stein, uh, for providing that kind of support to Ms. Whitaker and to Nellie K. and to the Nellie K. teachers and staff to be able to achieve that kind of success. I'm sure, I hope you join me in that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. The second question I have is unrelated to Nellie K., um, is regarding the contract for marketing and public relations services between Wright Associates, Mr. Amorato's firm, and the city. My question is, I'll, I'll put it to the mayor. I don't know if the mayor can answer it, or, or if, miss, or if the city manager, or whomever. Is Mr. Amorato and Wright Associates submitting detailed invoices for the sixty-five hundred dollars a month he gets paid for the services he renders to the city?
I'll defer that to the city manager.
Mr. Amorato is a, has a monthly bill, they submit a monthly work that he's done. He has an overall responsibility for press releases, uh, he works seven days a week, every day, pretty much, as far as what you want beyond that, let me know.
Well, I, I guess the question is, you know, to what detail does he, what detail does he submit on the invoices, is what I meant, in terms of what actual services he rendered, whether it's month-to-month or whatever. I think it's month-to-month by the contract in terms of when, when he's supposed to submit the invoices. The, you know, and I can explain to you my concern further, but my question is, on those invoices, does he just submit a bill sixty-five hundred dollars for monthly, uh, you know, professional services of marketing and public relations, or does he go into more specifics as to what he's done for you, for the city?
There's a, a stack of his work that he's done for the city for the month, press releases and whatnot.
You mean attached to the invoice?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, but, all right, thank you very much. I, I will submit an Oprah request for those.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Uh, my name is Miguel Maldonado. I live at two fifty Parker Avenue. I've lived there for seventeen years, and, uh, I don't have that much to say tonight except for one thing that I got pet peeved about the other day, as the city manager said that DPW did a good job. In certain issues, they didn't, but I'm not going to bring that up tonight. However, I'm a spokesperson for, for the whole entire block because we all got ticketed on Thursday, the worst storm of the year, and I don't understand why we got ticketed, including myself.
Can you tell me what street that was on, sir?
Two fifty, between Parker and Prospect Avenue. I live on two fifty Parker Avenue. And I meant to say between Polyfy and Prospect Avenue.
Between Polyfy and Prospect, okay.
Right. Um, I did contact the city manager a couple of times. We, we kept missing each other. I understand that. I did leave a message for Mr. Madorga. He never got back to me. I did give him my number as I walked in so he, we can sit down and have coffee as he stated to me, but we never got a call stating that they want to, uh, clean the streets, you know, during a snowstorm. Where are we supposed to put our cars?
Is there, is there, let me, and I hate to interrupt you, is there a sign on the streets there as they do not park when roads are snow-covered?
No.
On, on Parker?
Not at all. In fact, I'm parked right now in front of a sign that says, "Snow-covered, you're not supposed to park there," but I took the risk anyway because everybody else is parked there.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I mean, where are we supposed to park at tonight, you know?
But at the, unfortunate, not unfortunate, there's a policy in the city, and it, sometimes it's enforced in certain areas, especially if it's an emergency route, which that might be because it's near the hospital.
Okay. Okay.
What I would have to do is, I'd need more information, I'd have to talk to the police director, and he'd have to talk to his men to see exactly what happened in that situation.
Okay. Because my understanding also was that this weekend, they sent out a, something to do with the city and a notice that we're not supposed to park until 7:00 a.m., which I got everybody in my block, told them they will have to move their cars, because they're not supposed to park, because they were going to clean, quote-unquote, "clean."
Right.
It never happened. I spoke to, I guess, the contractor who was driving up with his backlog or whatever it is. He even said to me, "Do you really think that was going to happen?" And I said, "I knew it wasn't going to happen, but somebody here needs to know that it wasn't going to happen before they gave us a ticket, before they made a notice stating that they're not, that they're going to clean the street, and they're not going to clean the street." You know, I mean, it's unfair to everybody there. I'm not the only one with the ticket, there's numerous people in that neighborhood that has tickets.
All right, I'm going to let the city manager answer that.
Mr. Mayor, the parking for, by, we allowed the vehicles to park in those old lots till 7:00 a.m. on Sunday morning, I believe it was, and no penalty to anyone. That's what the extent that we, the courtesy we extended to the homeowners and the residents. We do our best, we're going to cruise around the clock to do, to get to all the streets. We tried to do our best. We didn't, I won't say, we didn't intend to get to every street, we did our best to do as many streets as we could, but the 7:00 a.m. was necessary to make sure the street was clean, but to help people get off the street if they needed to have a place to put their cars, without having to pay for it.
Right, which, which we did.
And we appreciate it, yeah.
That I'm clear of, you know, since, I mean, my tenant, who is a teacher in the city of Hackensack, got ticketed as well. And, you know, I mean, you know, we paying our taxes here, you know, to get ticketed for a day, like I said, the worst snow day of the year, which was last Thursday. Are they for real to give us tickets?
Well, one of our, and moving forward with this, we're, there's going to be some discussion on how to handle storms. This one was an exceptionally tough storm these last two. Our goal is, we have to get the cars off the street in order to properly plow the streets, and without that, we run into a lot of problems, especially as you see that two storms ago. We couldn't get curb to curb, just stuff froze on us, and once it froze on us, we were, we were in trouble.
Believe me, I'm aware, because, again, I'm responsible to clean the stone off my sidewalk, but in that way the pedestrians can walk.
Right.
So I'm totally aware of that. However, they did mention that they were going to do that on Saturday, which never happened.
And, and as the city manager said, we got as many streets as we could get done. We couldn't, we couldn't pick and choose what streets to say that to.
I'm aware, I don't mean to force you, but I'm aware of that, because I drove up to Nellie K. Parker, which is right up there from where I live at, I saw the payloaders up there, I saw the trucks lifting all the stone, removing it where the areas are for the kids, and I understand that.
Right.
You know, I'm total, and I'm in total agreement on that. The only thing is that, you know, don't send out a message if you're not going to stick to it neither. That's my point.
Well, realistically, we could not hit every street.
I know, I know.
We just couldn't do it.
I, that I.
And we didn't know which ones to get, we were going to, how far we were going to get, we were going to get as far as we could, that was our goal.
Right.
But we had to get the cars off the street.
But I'm aware that realistically it wasn't going to happen.
Right.
But then my resident, my neighbor, my tenant, and my, and the residents around me, you know, we have to, they got our cars, move it, only because this came out.
Right.
And never happened. And realistically, I know that wasn't going to happen.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
What's your address, your street?
Uh, Parker Avenue. Between Polyfly and Park is my, my address.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Howard Hurwith, Street 26, Prospect Avenue. I'd like to ask about financial disclosure. The state of New Jersey requires that all elected officials file a financial disclosure form. This tells people, basically, what sources of income you have and what property you own in the state. They're supposed to be filed by April 30th, except that newly-elected council members are supposed to file within 30 days of taking office. Now, I went on the state website, I can give the clerk a copy, none of your names appear. And so I'd like to ask if it's possible, if any of you have filed the financial disclosure form that's required.
Did you want to say something? I wanted to.
I'll, I'll jump in, Mayor. In most municipalities that I know, those come through the clerk, and then they're submitted to the members, the elected members of the governing body, and then, and then submitted on an annual basis. I don't know whether that had been done upon your election, but if it hadn't been, then obviously it can be done forthwith, and it will be.
As I recall, as a previous elected official, that, the way I recall it, was giving to me, previous to the due date, I think you said in April, sometime in February or March, we got the forms from the city clerk, and even from my first, first year.
All right, so as far as you know, nobody has filed in, since the last election. I'd like to address you, Mr. Mayor, because you were a council member.
Yes.
And your name does not appear on the list. Every other one of your fellow council people filed a form, there are four council people on here, and you're not on here.
And what are you, what are you talking about, sir? So I know. Any particular?
I just gave it to the clerk.
Okay.
This is the form.
To my recollection, I filed.
State of New Jersey Department, well, if you filed.
Mm-hmm.
You recall that this year it was electronic filed.
Electronically, I filed last year for the first time.
And you have, and you have a receipt, because they gave you a receipt number, and you can prove that you filed. I'm just telling you, maybe for your own good, it is not on the.
Well, I do recall filing electronically, it was the first time last year we did it.
Okay.
I don't recall getting a receipt for it, but I do recall filing it.
When you entered the information, it gave a receipt. I filed it, I was a member of the Board of Adjustment, all my fellow members on the Board of Adjustment, the Reporting Board, everybody else filed. Nobody, as I said, in the council.
Well, I will definitely go back and check that, and I thank you for bringing that to my attention. Next, please.
Good evening.
Evening.
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilor. Annette Jankowski, Prospect Avenue. I would just like to thank the council for their reservations and their concerns regarding the proposal by the owner of the Prospect Heights Care Center to process his medical waste at that facility in a residential area. And as you know, this is the same individual who would like to build an 18-story LTAC across the street from his facility. So I know this is, I know that he has been allowed by the county freeholders to process Prospect Heights waste, if I'm not mistaken, but not his other facilities.
Actually, that was by the PCUA, I believe. It hasn't gone before the freeholders yet.
Yeah.
Correct.
Do you know when the next meeting will be regarding this issue, before the BC?
Well, it will be before the freeholders. I'm not sure of the exact date. I know we're in contact with one of the freeholders who's paying close attention to this, and...
Will the public know, do you think, when?
Absolutely. Oh, yes. Oh, yes. No, they'll be, we'll make sure that, you know, people from Prospect know, so they can get there.
Thank you, because residents of Prospect, of Prospect Avenue, including myself, we have the same serious concerns as you do.
Absolutely.
So thank you for your support.
Oh, you're quite welcome. Next, please.
Good evening.
Evening.
This is Karen Blumenfeld, and you heard from my colleague Karen Murphy last night when the Smoke Free Parks ordinance came up for discussion. I just want to thank you again for the collaborative efforts between Mayor, Council, City Manager's Office, Rec Department, the Health Department. And for the second reading, once the ordinance passes, again, we have the free signs for you, so I just came up to find out who it is that we should coordinate with to figure out how many signs you would like to have. So I'm not sure if it would be the City Manager's Office and Greg Leosie? Okay, so we will connect with you over the next week or so and figure it out, and then we'll bring you the amount of signs that you need.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next, please.
My name is Pierre Galard. I live on Standish Avenue, which is supposed to be classified a emergency street. As, like I said, supposed to be. When they come up the hill from Polyfly to supposed to be Summit, as classified as snow emergency street, they like to put all the snow on one side and forget about the other side. So far as I'm concerned, a snow emergency street means you clean both sides. From Polyfly to the Summit, well, it seems like they only go two blocks, then the rules change at the crest of the hill. I just submitted a block from, a, a, not a sign, a list of addresses, blocks that from Standish, on Standish, from Polyfly to Summit, which blocks are being snowed and which ones are not. I also requested to have a stop sign put on top of the hill at Hopper. When they come from Polyfly, I mean, from Prospect and come to the hill, you can't see them to the last moment. Soon they hit Hopper, then they appear. Kids are almost getting hit. I almost got hit four times when they come off the top of that hill. The snow from the top of the hill, from Hopper to Summit, you can forget about it, because cars are both sides. If it's snow emergency, you either ticket it, tow it, or bury it. They have the choice to do the three. Number two, I'd like to know about hospital, is tax-free. Is the emergency room and garages taxed?
There's some of the, the one garage, the main garage, which is considered retail, that charges, does pay partial tax on the building, because some of it is for a retail business, where they actually charge you to park. Some of it is for employee parking, and that part does not pay taxes. The emergency room, I'm not sure I would say no, because that's probably healthcare.
Well, I was told that it was outsourced.
What's that?
I was told that the emergency room was outsourced.
That I'm not aware of, as far as outsourced in which way, that it's a private entity itself?
Right.
I'm not aware of that, and I work there, so I'd have to look into that one.
Okay. Because the reason why I'm stating that, if Philly Dickinson, when they tried to put the new, three new buildings, for every building that was not taxed, they had to put a tax building up. So all this property, the Hackensack Hospital's taking, "Hey, we here to get some revenue." They've got too much property, tax-free. We should just stick it out, give us taxpayers a break. Also, I'd like to know, what are you doing for the senior citizens with the school tax? Our children are gone.
Well, that's a, that's a, that's what that question is asked across the country. Unfortunately, we pay school taxes until we're no longer able to, unlabelled to pay taxes. But, yeah, there's, there's no easy, and the school tax, you'd have to deal with the Board of Ed, that's not, not our entity, that's...
Also, I'd like to know, all these cameras, that all these town want cameras, what budget does that go under?
Which cameras are you talking about?
The cameras, you know, they put on buildings and stuff of that nature, to see people walking around or running under the lights.
Well, if, if it's surveillance cameras for the city, it would be paid for by the city. Sometimes in high-crime areas, you'll see cameras, and that money is sometimes used from confiscated money from drugs and stuff like that, or will come out of a budget, our budget. A lot of times, you'll see cameras on certain lights, counties have cameras at intersections on lights in Hackensack, we have nothing to do with that. As far as these red light cameras, we don't have those in town.
Thank God.
Right. But surveillance cameras that were ours would be paid for somehow through the city, either through confiscated funds or, or through our budget.
It's not a taxpayer issue, it's come from confiscated funds, all these cameras that everybody wants.
Well, we, the joy of using confiscated funds is there's no cost to the taxpayer.
Right, that's what I mean.
Right.
It's not a taxpayer issue for putting, submitting all these cameras.
Right, but if it's not confiscated funds, it would be a tax.
That's what I mean. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Next, please.
Barbara Johnson, 345 Railroad Avenue. I have a question to the storm. I know it didn't get to every street, it did the main streets, I guess, but the side streets, are you going to do anything with those? James Street in particular.
I'm going to defer to the city manager.
We're going street by street, and with the rain coming right now, we've been pulling off and make sure all catch basins are clear, so we're trying to avoid flooding. The pain, probably what happens over the next few days, we're going to drop back again and try to run curb to curb.
Okay.
We're hoping, we're hoping with the rain, enough snow melts, that we won't have to remove it anymore, we can just hopefully just push it toward the curb.
Okay. As far as parking, like tomorrow's street cleared on the west side of railroad.
There won't be street cleaning if there's, if we're not to the curb.
But how do I know that? Do I have to move my car? Do I run the risk of getting a ticket?
I would say right now there's not street cleaning.
Okay.
Because I, actually, I spoke to our DPW and San Tashian guys, saying that we're going to street sweep tomorrow.
I'll be okay? I won't get a ticket?
I won't get a ticket.
Not this time?
Not this time.
Okay, thank you.
Next, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Gregory Taylor. I live at 70 Anderson Street. I think I've sent each one of you an email concerning the situation that took place with Holy Trinity Church.
Mm-hmm.
The night, the night prior to the storm, the city indicated that we had to move off the streets. So we got off the streets. A lot of cars were parked in Holy Trinity. Holy Trinity decided to enforce their will, and they have every right to, because we're not allowed to park in the parking lot for church and school, business only. But they've been somewhat lax or lenient in doing so. So there were a lot of cars parked in that lot, and all those cars in the lot got ticketed. Not only did they get ticketed, there were a number of cars that got ticketed and towed.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if the city's going to tell us to move off the streets, how do we go, how do you go about telling us where to go? You know, I found out through a police officer that, hey, you can go down to Atlantic Street. For me, Atlantic Street's about a half mile away. I did it. You know, my wife and I, we drove our cars down Atlantic Street, we had a neighbor who brought us back, but this was around 11:30 at night.
Right.
You know, so we're, there's, there's a concern about what's going on. You know, if you, you know, people are concerned about, even now, whether they should park on Pangborn, which is one of the side streets. And one neighbor's sitting in her car for a number of hours, you know, hoping that if the city did decide to clean Pangborn, she wouldn't get ticketed or have her car towed. But I realize that there's enough, that, that the, the number of storms that come through have taken away precious parking spaces, and there is a parking problem in the area, there's no doubt about it. You know, I'm tempted every day when I come home in the evenings to park in the church parking lot, you know, but that temptation has been pushed back somewhat because of, I don't want to have to pay anywhere between $400 to $800, or $400 to $800 ransom to get my car back. This is what these towing companies are doing. I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's legit, I don't know if they're gouging or not. You know, but we were kind of caught between a rock and a hard place in attempts to adhere to what the city wanted. I later found out that the city rescinded the communique or the memo, that we didn't have to get our cars off the street. So all we're asking for, and I speak for the community, only in that I'm a member of the community.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not here as a designated appointee. But how do you go about getting notice or information about what to do when you have emergency?
The best way, it was listed that, that evening, and it was, and it was late, we did get a little late start on that, by the time we got the 911, reverse 911 call-out. But it was up on the website with the designated parking areas where you could take your car. I know there was Atlantic Street Lot C and also.
Rec Center.
The Recreation Center downtown. And unfortunately, we don't have any property up in the northern, western end of town of lots we could use for parking. So I know it was a bit of an inconvenience, but it was better than nothing at all, we felt. At least we're trying to get the cars off of there. As far as the, the church goes, it wasn't a designated spot by us. It had nothing to do with us, so...
That's their property.
Yeah, it's their, it's their property.
And they can do whatever they want. You know, I don't have a problem with what they did.
Right.
It was in the cloak of darkness.
Right.
You know, I got, I got shaken up out of bed because a neighbor knocked on the door telling me that, hey, if you don't move your car, it's going to get towed.
Right, right.
If I go out there, and these towing companies are acting like, acting in a, almost like an assembly line manner.
Well, the one thing I'd like the city manager to look into is this price gouging you're talking about, because that's certain, certainly something we don't want to allow.
$400. I was one of the lucky ones, I didn't get my car towed. But there were people in, in the area who got at least two cars towed.
Hmm.
You know, I mean...
Did you get, I'm sorry, did you get a phone call for the reverse 911?
Some people did, I don't remember receiving one. I had neighbors in the, in the area tell me that they did, you know. You know, again, I don't fault the church for doing what they did. That's their property, they can do whatever they want.
Right.
Just the way, just the way it went about. You know, I got shaken out of bed around quarter to 11:00.
Right. That's something you expected, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, we were really caught off guard. You know, and because of the snow, every pile of snow takes away a precious parking space. You know, even if they allowed us to park in the lot, it may, it may still be a problem, but some people take advantage of the situation.
Right.
You know, but they don't, but they give tacit approval to park in the lot, because they don't, they haven't ticketed the cars or towed the cars up until this past Wednesday. So I'm going to be speaking with, I think his name is Father Paul, he and I are going to sit down tomorrow. We're going to discuss this, because we both have serious disagreements about what to do. And I think it's important that we try to clear this up.
All right.
Because it's, it's going to happen again.
Oh, it could, absolutely.
Yeah.
Got a lot, sure. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, please.
Okay, Ken, the video I heard said...
Good evening, Eric Anderson, Bergen Street.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to make two points this evening. First point is, I would like to congratulate all of you on having the foresight to declare the redevelopment part, the 150 to 170 on Main Street.[1609.74] the 150 to 170 on Main Street. I think it's a momentous achievement for you as a council and for the city, and just for the downtown moving forward. And we are very, I'm very excited. I know that the people downtown are very excited because we know that this is going to be a major improvement with a awful large project coming forward soon. So again, congratulations, and thank you for your foresight. Second, I just wanted to make a brief note that I had the occasion recently to work with your City Manager, and he was very professional and helped me through some issues that I had. So I just want to let you know, he did a great job.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Anybody else?
Can I say something, please?
Sure.
I saw a few people shaking their head. I asked if anyone got to receive the call from the reverse 911. If it's okay, I'd like to put a piece of paper out front here. If anyone did not get a phone call, like to have a number added, we can do that through OEM. So this way, when it does happen again, you'll be on the list, and you'll be, a list that will ever, will ever grow. I think we hit around 11,000 households, I think it was, between everything with the call. So if anybody was missing, we do apologize for that because the numbers we get are through Verizon, I think Optimum. So what we'll do is, I'll put a sheet of paper out here, and whoever would like to put their name and phone number on there, we'll make sure you get on the list for the call for next time.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am?
Little 230 Central, Hackensack. Let's piggybacking off what you just said, is it, excuse me, is there any other way that people could get put on the list, like via email or website? Because there's nobody here, really. And I know a lot of people who haven't received calls. So is there any other way?
Well, we have Hackensack.org, everything's posted there on our website. And I can speak to Albert Dib, I was going to say, our IT person, to do an email blast. So if you want to put your email address on there, we'll have an email blast go each time as well.
Okay.
We'll do that for you.
So it'd be my job to reach it out to everybody else?
Well, no, whoever wants to add to, you know, we have a list.
It's going to be on the website for you to add your number or your email?
I don't know if we have the capability to add the website, to add your address to our website, but if you have something here, like tonight, if you want to put something down or give me contact information, I'll get back to you to see if it's possible to log on. Or, or at the very least, I'll make sure your address gets on, so it gets to you, and we'll figure out a way to make the communication better.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, I think we might want to use City Hall email also, if we can get one designated person to accept phone numbers. Al Dib, for instance, would, that would be good for him, to take the number so we can input them into the system.
Okay.
All right.
Can I make a suggestion about when they do that, though, as far as the blast that you said earlier? Can they do, like, send us something in the notice when we pay our taxes, or, you know, some sort of form that they can do it that way as well? Because when we pay taxes...
Okay, sir, you can't, you can't speak from out in the audience, I understand. But I, we're, I'm going to speak about some of the issues during our comments, and it'll, I'll address, I'll actually address that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, nobody else? This time, I'd like to, a motion to close this meeting to the public.
I'll offer. Second?
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay. Councilman Pataglia?
I want to thank everybody for coming, and I know that I'm very happy to keep everybody happy. We are trying the best we can, and I hope so we can do better the next time. But you better be with us, you know, sometime I go around, and I see the people from DPW doing work all the way to 12 o'clock at night sometimes. So they are trying, we are trying to do the best we can. So I know that it's difficult and to try to make everybody happy, but you have to be patient, and let's see that we don't have another one. And I hope that maybe we can continue cleaning the streets in the way everybody can park their cars, and, and then there aren't going to be more problems with parking or tickets or whatever. Thank you for coming.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, first of all, it was, it was really nice, the start of our evening tonight. We, you know, had a wonderful commendation for one of our grammar schools, I mean, recognized by the state in such a high regard, that was, you know, really set the tone for a nice evening, as well as, you know, the appointment of our first African-American police lieutenant. I mean, great way to start the evening. Everyone knows that I'm the finance girl, or the finance council member that likes to talk about money and worry about money. So I'd like to just take a couple of minutes to try and address some of the questions that were raised tonight with regards to our legal bills. I'm not a person that really likes to talk about problems. I'm much more oriented towards solutions. But we have to face facts. When we took office here in July, we knew that legal bills were a tremendous problem for the city of Hackensack. And we knew that we were going to have to do a certain amount of work to, to right the course for the city of Hackensack and get control of the situation. And we knew there was going to be a significant investment in doing so. And we're proud to say that we feel we're on the other side of that now. That, is everything perfect? No. Have we accomplished a lot? Absolutely. And we're well on our way to righting the course for controlling the legal bills, which have been a problem for the city for many years. Again, not wanting to focus on problems, but you have to understand, we took office, we had contracts that were missing, we had leases that were missing and weren't paid in years. I'm sure Mr. Sawkins is well aware of the missing SRO agreement. No one could get their hands and find it. We had...
One question, man.
I'm being kind in saying it was missing, all right? We had maintenance agreements that were not documented. You know, we researched, and we found that we were paying maintenance fees that were incorrect, because we had nothing to basis, there was no basis of it. These things needed to be corrected. We had ordinances that were out of date or were never instituted properly for the protection of the city. We've implemented many of those things. We inherited lawsuits that drove legal fees in this city over $8 million in the past, in the past four years. We're a city of 500, approximately 500 employees. Do you know that when we took office, there were no documented job descriptions for any of these city employees? And none of our city employees, or maybe perhaps a few, but none that I could find, had ever, ever had a performance review or a performance evaluation. We're proud to say this year that has been accomplished. So we are very, very proud of the accomplishments we've made. And did they cost us something in the, in the beginning? Absolutely, they did. But going forward with one of the resolutions that we have in place tonight, we're very pleased to say that our city attorney fees are actually showing a 20% reduction over what we've been paying in the past number of years. I'm looking specifically at city attorney fees now. We took those fees and we averaged them. What were we paying on the average, not litigation, just city attorney fees in the past four years? And they averaged $226,000. The plan we put in place today for a blanket flat rate of $15,000 a month comes out to $180,000 a year. So that's a nice 20% reduction right out of the box for a fine diversified law firm that will suit the needs of the city very, very well. We're extremely confident of that. Another expense that we were able to minimize, actually, we're on our way to eliminating, I won't say minimize, as part of the legal bills outside the realm of city attorney, because our city attorney was related to our police chief and therefore had to recuse himself from overseeing the police litigation, we had to hire someone who was almost another pseudo-city attorney to oversee those lawsuits. That city, that particular individual worked for this city for three and a half years. In those three and a half years, to oversee those litigations, we have paid him $737,000. Now, he did not litigate a case, he oversaw them. This year, I'm happy to say in 2013, where he was averaging as high as $300,000 a year, his payments are down to $103,000 for the year of 2013. And then the last six months of this year since we took office, we've only paid that individual about $29,000. He will receive no new cases, he's finishing up a few old ones. So we are well on our way to gaining control of the legal fees and managing them to the best interests of the city and this community. And we are all very, very proud of that. And we are all thankful to Mr. Scrivell and his firm for the excellent job they have done. And that needs to be said. And I hope the community shares my enthusiasm and looks forward to wonderful, wonderful years to come with this city attorney. Thank you.
Mr. Sims?
Good evening. I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. Please be patient with us. I want to thank DPW for a great job. Get home safe. Good night, everyone.
Ms. Greenman?
Nice and to the point. I want to thank everyone for coming here. This meeting started on a very high note, and it was very heartrending to, to find individuals, got, you know, recognized for the wonderful work that they do for the community. Our city inherited a whole lot of problems, illegal problems were not the only thing that we inherited. But let's concentrate on legal problems. And we're very fortunate, extremely fortunate, to have a very fine, very well diversified firm, tremendously talented people working for us, very hard, with phone calls galore every single day. Hundreds of hours of phone calls from people who did not know how to do their job. Phone calls that did not have to go to the attorneys that ended up going to the attorneys. The attorneys had to do the job of people who were entrusted with doing their jobs, were not doing their job. So I think we did tremendously well. And I want to thank our attorney and his firm for supporting us and holding our hand throughout this process. I want to thank you as well, Anthony, for doing tremendous job in cleaning up the snow and the DPW, as well as the sanitation. And I know you worked 40 hours, the last couple of days, you worked 40 hours without stopping. Congratulations. Thank you for coming, and have a safe trip home. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to start with the DPW. Unbelievable job. I mean, you know, snowstorms like this, weather events, snow emergencies, whatever you want to call it, it's a no-win situation. You're not going to make everybody happy, but I think our DPW did an outstanding job of especially getting the emergency routes open. People have to realize we have a Level 2 trauma center in this, in this city, one of the largest hospitals in the Northeast. And really, we have to stay on top of keeping these routes open. These guys were working as much as they possibly could work. And to you, Mr. Rotino, you know, I tip my hat, you worked around the clock for days, and I feel your pain. It was, it was, it was a tough storm. And I drove through some other towns, and you know, all of North Jersey, all the municipalities had the same exact problem, you know. One of the issues I have, let's speak about the snowstorm real quick, is we have to, what I want to do and plan to do is take all our emergency people, our DPW, our police chief, or director, I'm sorry, fire chief, the head of the Office of Emergency Management, and we're going to have a sit-down session and to see what we can do better. And that's, that's how we get better. And that's what's usually done in emergency situations after the fact, they sit down and they, they rehash everything, what could we have done better? And this is, you know, important for us to do this. And then what we will do after we meet, we'll reach out to the public and get some, some information from them, because we need their information also. So that, I want to set that up probably, you know, early spring. Hopefully, we don't get any more big storms like this. Main Street Alliance, I see a couple guys here from Main Street Alliance, Mr. Lombardo, Mr. Anderson, thanks for coming. Get your budget on the way. I want to, I want to thank you for working with this council, and we enjoy working with you guys. You can see what's going to happen on Main Street. Everything's in place. We've worked well together. We've got everything ready to go, pretty much, to get the two-way going on Main and State Street. And, you know, 150, 170 is a huge step for Hackensack. It's a huge step of putting 300-plus people on the street, and that's only going to increase business and make our city a more valuable city. So thank you for your work. The proclamation's tonight, I don't know, is this mic working? Can you hear me? Sounds like it's going in and out. Anyway, the proclamation's tonight, I've known Mrs. Whitaker for a while. She's taken over from some, my children went to Parker School, so I have a, you know, a soft spot in my heart for that school, and they do a good job over there. So I was very happy to see that, and it was well-deserving of Parker School and Mrs. Whitaker and her whole staff. Jim Price, what a, what a great, great honor that is to lead his community and become the first lieutenant. Great guy, couldn't ask for a nicer guy. He's got a great personality, he's just perfect for the job. So very happy to see that happen. Legal bills, I think Mrs. Canestrino covered that, is about as good as you could. I mean, we, you know, I'm not going to beat the dead horse. We inherited some issues, we took care of them, cost us some money, and we're moving forward. We lowered the bills by 20%, which equates to about $40,000 a year, I believe, moving forward. And I'm quite pleased with that. I'm going to realize, legal bills were, for the last few years, with, if you took litigation into account, millions and millions of dollars every year for the last four or five years. And that, that has now stopped. So, and we look to keep it that way. And on that note, I want to wish everybody a safe trip home, and thank you for coming out tonight. Appreciate it. I know the weather's not that great. We're looking for some 50-degree days by the end of the week, and get these, you know, get the snow out of here, all right? Thank you, everybody. Oh, I'm sorry, we have to go into closed session real quick for one quick personnel issue. Probably about 10 minutes, guys. So, sorry.
Okay. I have a resolution calling for executive meeting of the City Council for the following purposes. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to discuss certain actions under Section 7B, 7 and 7B8, or the Open Public Meetings Act, which pertains to matters falling within attorney-client privilege, ongoing litigation, and personnel matters concerning the appointment of a current or prospective public employee. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack is of the opinion that such circumstances may presently exist, and whereas the township council wishes to discuss the following issues, personnel matters, ongoing litigation matters involving attorney-client privilege. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to exclude the public from this discussion. The outcome of the discussion will be disclosed within 90 days, or at such time as the interest of the city do not require confidentiality. We need a motion.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second?
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Mayor, as a clarification, that's a personnel matter involving the Police Department.
Yes, thank you. Okay.